Test, test, test. Marita. Marita, can you hear me? Marita.
Yes.
I know, I'm talking through air, right? Is the door to the IT room unlocked?
Um. Leanne came over earlier. No, it's locked.
Okay, see how the white participant box is on the screen there?
Oh, I'm sorry, say it again, a white box?
See how the white box there with the people's names, you know, remote support? Leanne forgot to shut that off. So I don't have access to the computer, I don't have access to the computer to shut that off. So if you had the key to that room, I could walk you through how to shut that off, it literally takes like two seconds.
Sure, let me go get it.
Okay.
Okay.
So go to the laptop first, I'll show you where, what I want you to do.
On the desk here?
No, the laptop where Brian sits. It'll be easier for me to show you.
Yeah.
So along the bottom of that Zoom screen, there's a participants box.
Yeah.
If you hit that, it shuts it off, you hit it again, it turns it on. So basically, all in, I need you to do in there is hit that participants and it'll shut that, that white box off. The keyboard is right on the top of this, on top of the black box in there.
Okay. Okay, I don't know if you can hear me from in there, but it's not set up the same. There is no participants at the bottom of the screen. Can I get this X out of the white box?
No, so you don't see that participants. If you wiggle the mouse, wiggle the mouse on that on that keyboard in there and it'll pop up.
So there's two computer screens, which one should I be looking at, the one on the right?
The one on the right, it sits on the black box, it's on the floor, it's got a little micro keyboard and it's got a pad, just run your finger on that pad and it'll pop up. The little participants window will pop up. There you go, it's gone.
All good?
All good, that's all I needed, yeah. I mean, it wouldn't have hurt if it stayed up, but it's just better if it's gone.
Yeah, should I let you go now or is Leanne gonna come?
No, you're all set, you can close it. So also, at the end of the night, I'll just need you to, I'll end the meeting and everything. I'll just want you to actually shut the TVs off tonight. Yeah, just the three TVs there because they'll they'll actually gonna stay on and the little Windows box will come up. They did not give me access to the PC that you just did that on.
Okay. Alright.
Okay.
You can do that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Bye.
It's gone.
It's magic from the sky, right?
Yeah, really. Thank you. How was it going?
Okay, I'm gonna give you I need copies. Okay, and I got something else. I made copies, but you should probably have at least one or two for your This is what I'm gonna read from and I was thinking.
Yes, I gotta actually do my checks. Hello. Hello, hello, hello.
She was, she got the bands.
Yeah.
Is he here?
Where'd you get the bands?
He's doing it remote today.
Oh, okay.
He's like, no, I'm trying to get my friends along.
I don't need to stand here while you go. Go. Session, so.
Yeah, so she comes home. Well, she comes to the house.
Bono.
Well, she told me, when she comes to the house, and she goes, hey, Jasmine said, uh, blah, blah, blah. Ruby, bro. She goes.
Tell us, tell me when you're ready.
She got more, more where that comes from.
I spell it S U.
Sunder.
Land.
Thing. You guys are ready to start whenever you'd like to.
It's S U N.
So we can, hey, can we go to adjourn? Say, I'd like to adjourn.
Yeah. Scott. Scott.
Okay.
All right, we all sit here, ready when you are.
Yo, start the mics.
All right.
Need a motion?
Yeah. I hear. I hear.
Start recording.
You. You are recording.
So I want to make a motion to re-just into executive session.
I make a motion to reassess to executive session under Rhode Island General Law Section forty-two dash forty-six dash five eight two litigation.
Second.
What's up for a second, all in favor?
Davis, aye.
Roy, aye.
Burns, aye.
Here we act. Hey, we'll be back.
And Pauline, it would just, she got the record press release. Where'd you get the bands?
My mom's.
Tell us something.
Okay.
Session.
Yes.
So she comes home. Well, she's off the bottom. But she hoped, when she comes to the house, and she goes, hey, Jasmine said, uh, blah, blah, blah. Ruby, bro. She goes.
Tell us, tell me when you're ready.
She got more, more where that comes from.
I spell it S U.
Sunder. Land. Thing. You guys are ready to start whenever you'd like to.
It's S U N. Who's gonna, hey.
Really adjourn?
Say, I'd like to adjourn.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
We all set?
Start the mics. Yeah. Start recording. You are recording. So.
To reassess to executive session under Rhode Island General Law Section forty-two. To executive session. Law. Section. Two.
Beth. I just texted, uh, Glenn and said, smile. And he wrote back to me, nope. I, Glenn Ahern.
Oh, is he there?
Uh, shit.
Make a motion that we reconvene in open session?
Second.
Motion for a second, all in favor?
Davis, aye.
Roy, aye.
Burns, aye.
Gary, aye. Statement by the town council president that any votes taken in executive session will not be disclosed at this time in accordance with. Steve. Thank you. We're down to law forty-two dash forty-six dash four dash B states all votes taken in closed session shall be disclosed once the session is reopened, providing, however, a vote taken in a closed session need not be disclosed for any period of time during which the disclosure would jeopardize any strategic negotiation or investigations undertaken pursuant to discussions conducted under our IG LA forty-two dash forty-six dash five A. Insert and vote to motion to seal the minutes of the executive session.
I make a motion to steal the minutes of the executive session.
Second.
Motion for a second, all in favor?
Davis, aye.
Roy, aye.
Burns, aye.
Gary, aye. Good evening, welcome to the Hopkin Town Council Town Council meeting for September fifteenth twenty twenty-five. I'd ask you to turn your phones to off or on vibrate, like stand up, take a moment, silent meditation, salute to the flag.
To the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could get you to all stand, please, like take a moment of silence for Charlie Kirk, his widow has two children at this time. Thank you. All right, move forward. So call council Davis, you're here.
Present.
Councillor Roy.
Present.
Councillor Burns.
Yeah.
And I am here in council James's excuse tonight. I'm gonna start off a little bit different tonight. I'm gonna start off with chief, you got the floor.
Good evening, members of the town, Hoppington Town Council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. I am here on behalf of the Hoppington Police Department to share the results of our first community car show, which was held earlier this month. I am proud to report that the event was a tremendous success, not only in the funds that we raised, but the connections that were rebuilt in our community. Through the generous support of residents, local businesses, participants, we were able to raise five thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars for the Matty Potts Foundation, a nonprofit that continues to do credible work supporting young people, promoting community values that align closely with ours. But just as important as the money we raised was the spirit of the day. The car show created a welcoming, family-friendly environment where officers could meet and talk with residents outside of emergencies, calls for service, or enforcement. Instead of of seeing us only during stressful, difficult moments, people were able to meet us as their neighbors. We shared stories, admired cars, and mostly importantly strengthened the trust and relationship that are essential for a healthy community. Events like this allow us to humanize the badge and remind everybody that we're not just here to serve and protect and stand beside, we're here to stand beside our community, not in times of crisis, but also in times of celebration. The feedback we received was overwhelmingly positive and many residents expressed how much they appreciated the chance to interact with our offices in such a relaxed, fun setting. In the end, the community car show accomplished two goals at once. It raised money, raised meaningful funds for a worthy cause, and brought the people of the Hoppington and its police department closer together. We look, we look forward to building on the success and we hope to make this event a tradition that continues to give back to our community year after year. Uh, thank you again for your support and for allowing us the opportunity to create an event that reflects the best of Hoppington, our generosity, our unity, and our commitment to one another. So at this time, I'd like to present the check for the funds that we raised to the Potts, Matty Potts Foundation. Let me give him the real check because I'd like to see him try to cast that one.
You're welcome. Have a good night, guys. Thank you. Excellent. Well, it was a very, uh, it was a very fun time at the car show. First up, public comment. Anybody, anybody online, Brian?
Nope. Couple in the audience.
Man with the hat.
Joe Moreau Old Depot wrote, um, I just want to say thank you to Chief Palmer, all the other officers that were there at the Chief Palmer, Chief Palmer again. You're welcome. Chief Carrier. I want to thank David Caswell. I saw David at the car show. I saw Bob Burns. Hopefully we had other members from the council in the, in the town that showed up. It was nice to see people get together like that. As Chief Carrier pointed out, uh, the whole town was like a community of people at this.
Like old homewalk.
Yeah, it really was at this car show and it was just a great day, great weather. Uh, the motorcycles were there. Uh, and it just turned out really swell. I just want to say thank you to everyone that was involved in that. Thank you.
Anybody else have a public comment?
At a SAS law, and I don't mean to be a broken record, but I just want to remind you all this Friday of the public meeting here. It is at five thirty and will be finished by seven thirty. Um, we have had several people sign up and so I, I would love to see you all there if you can come just to listen and hear what the community has to say. That will be like the major impact or influence. I want to thank Brian for putting it on the front page of the news part of the, uh, website and all the cooperation I've gotten from Jeff and Jasmine, who is our liaison. It's been a group effort to cause this to happen. So I think it'll be very successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Always a good time. Uh, anybody else? Brian, anybody online?
Uh, no.
Okay, move forward. Approval agenda or agenda order? It's an agenda. Now, council meeting minutes of September second, twenty twenty-five approved monthly report.
Information, motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved, say it all in favor?
Roy, aye.
Davis, aye.
Burns, aye.
All right, vacancies and appointments. Discuss sincerely possibly vote to reappoint Mary Gibbons to the Hopkin Land Trust Board of Trustees. Let's come up. Why does it look like, like to put names with faces?
Yes, that's what I heard. I heard I didn't have to come and then I came. I am Mary Gibbons. I'm a resident. I've been in Hoppington for thirty-eight years.
How long you been sitting on the land trust board?
You know, I, I couldn't tell you, but it's been over, um, sixteen years, I think, at this point.
So I thank you. We thank you for your dedication.
Yeah, thank you. We, we will need younger volunteers coming up down the road here, so.
It's not the only organization. Councillors, any questions?
No.
No, thank you.
We've seen.
Service.
Yeah, she seems like she knows what she's doing and she likes it.
Oh, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, reappoint Mary Gibbons to the Hoppington Land Trust Board of Trustees.
Motion for a second, all in favor?
Roy, aye.
Davis, aye.
Burns, aye.
Gary, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you.
Sixteen years is a long time. It's like some of the people on planning on zoning, twenty and twenty-five years. All right, unfinished business. One discuss regarding how to sign up for the villages. Councillor Davis.
Okay, so I have, um, put the packets on the front table. It has a letter that I'm going to read and then it has the application for volunteers and it has the brochure for members. So, dear friends, we are excited to share that we are part of a combined effort to bring the village. dear friends, we are excited to share that we are part of a combined effort to bring the Village Common of Rhode Island to the communities of Hoppington, Richmond, and Exeter. It will be called the Wood River Village. For those who are not familiar with the village concept, it started in Rhode Island in two thousand fifteen and now has grown to villages in Aquid Neck Island, Barrington, Bristol Warren, Burrville, Cumberland, Edgewood, Exeter, Gloucester, Jamestown, Providence, Warwick, Westerly, and soon East Greenwich. What is a village? It is not a physical space, but neighbors supporting neighbors, providing support through transportation to appointments, tech support, light household maintenance, social interaction, and activities. We want our older neighbors to remain engaged, connected, and independent as they age in their place. Um, we accomplish this through a dedicated team of volunteers from our community who undergo training and a background check. Attached, attached is a brochure that provides more detail. Please consider volunteering if you are interested in helping organize the effort to make the Wood River Village a reality in our town. For more information about volunteering, please contact Gabriella at, um, volunteer@villagecommonri.org. Volunteer applications are also available at the Hoppington Town Hall and on the Hoppington Town website. Good news, the Hoppington Recreation Department has volunteered to train to become local service coordinators who will answer the phone when members call in requests for services. The Asherway and Langgore the libraries have volunteered to train to become local membership ambassadors. They will meet with potential members to discuss services, membership dues, which is basically donations, what you think it's worth. There's no amount. It's whatever you think the services worth. Help them fill out membership applications, provide member handbooks, and welcome them into the village. Stay tuned for more updates. I'm on the steering committee, and we are having a Zoom meeting on Thursday morning to continue working toward this. So stay tuned.
Excellent.
I would also like to make a little comment and just to remind people who might be watching or the public, um, this organization is a five oh one C three. They accept donations and grants from the federal and state, and they are not in compliance with executive orders on DEI. Thank you.
Public comment? Brian, anybody? Yes, did you, Council Roy, did you want to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn in the memory of Mr. Bob Sunderland. He was a good man, and he will be missed.
Second.
One quick note, if some of you might not know, Scott Sullivan sits on one of our boards. Our condolences go out to him. Motion on the floor.
I already said.
Motion for second, all in favor?